Thank you. Good evening. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 30, notice is hereby given that the Select Board will meet on Monday, November 17th at 2025 at 7:00 PM. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting, Room 124, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass., or by remote Zoom connection provided below. Please note on the agenda, please note that the in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the remote connection. If attending remotely, please sign in using your first and last name. To request to ask a question or provide comment, please use the raise hand feature. When you click on your name, and the chair will address the request. Welcome to the November 17th meeting of the Norfolk Select Board, and let's start with saying the...
The meeting's being recorded.
Oh, and I marked that, and then I skipped it. Please be advised that this meeting will be audio and video recorded for future rebroadcast by the Norfolk Community Television. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We start our meetings with public comment, where people have three minutes. I was just going to read the language that's in here. Citizens are welcome to express their views during public comment for up to three minutes on any matter that affects the town. The Select Board will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during public comment, but we will give all remarks appropriate consideration. So does anybody have public comment at this time? It says SmartCast TV not available.
Yeah, we're trying to work that out.
All right. Any public comment?
There's no hands in the...
No hands, no public comment in the room? All right, we're going on to item number one, which is a public hearing, a use classification of all properties. And here we go. I move that I would accept a motion for the Board to vote to open the public hearing regarding use classification of all properties and exemptions in the town for purposes of fiscal year 2026.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The hearing is open. Welcome.
Good evening. Chris Mitchell, your Chief Assessor. So... Just a second, so I can get the caller's phone number off screen.
There we go.
Okay. The purpose of the classification hearing is, same as every year, the Select Board must hold a classification hearing each year to consider the tax rate options available to the town under the property tax classification. As we say every year, we are not here to set the tax rate. Neither the Assessor nor the Select Board has that kind of authority. What we are here to do is to consider whether to continue with a single tax rate or to go to a split tax rate, and whether or not to consider any of the three state-allowed exemptions. The town of Norfolk currently has a 94%, approximately 94% residential, 4% commercial and industrial, and 2% personal property. Due to these percentages, splitting the tax rate would put a heavier burden on the commercial/ industrial properties throughout the town with minimal relief to the residential properties. It's important to remember that the majority of personal property taxes are paid within -- that are paid within the town are paid by our commercial and industrial properties, so that entire 6% would be effective. Therefore, shift or split would cause a larger impact on the businesses throughout town, which in turn could influence some of our commercial and industrial businesses to leave. We're here setting the quote "values." The assessed residential value is based on a comparable sales market analysis of the prior year's sales. So for FY '26, we used 2024, the calendar year 2024, sales as the DOR requires. The assessed commercial value is based on income and expenses, as well as the comparable sales analysis and a cost analysis. And these are all approved by the Department of Revenue, which they adjust annually. This year, we obviously had a deeper dive, as you know from our Citizens Academy, because we're in certification. We currently have approximately around with hundreds of... make up their assessed value. In order to keep this data as accurate and current as possible, the Assessor's Office this year will have analyzed over 600 sales from calendar year 2024 and inspected and measured over 200 that were considered qualified sales. We have also compiled and evaluated income and expense information, along with forms of list for all of our commercial properties. Massachusetts statute requires the assessors to assess all property at its full and fair cash value as of January 1st each year. Interim year adjustments are made based on market sales analysis during non-certification years, and full property revaluation, which is also known as certification, is required and completed every five years. We just completed our certification year. The tax rate is derived from total taxable real estate and personal property, as well as town meeting appropriations, state aid, town revenues, town expenditures, new growth, and debt exclusion and overrides. Everybody always wants to know about the new growth, so I'm just going to brief dive. New growth is the increase in property values due to anything new, hence the name new growth. New construction, new additions to properties, subdivisions, developments like condo developments, and anything that was exempt that would be returned to the tax rolls if the town sold something, that is considered new growth as well. It gets added to the levy limit, so that helps. This past year, there were over 400 permits, a majority of which required a visit from the Assessor's Office to evaluate the work that was done. And then we determine from that whether changes that they made from these permits can be considered new growth according to the DOR's guidelines. This next slide is just a history of the new growth, and shows what our new growth was for this year's. We've been working extremely hard gathering growths since shortly after I arrived, seven or so years ago. We've been visiting a lot of properties that hadn't been visited in years, finding construction that was either never found prior or was not permitted. The balance of the new growth this year has come from the completion of some existing projects, such as the enclave, which is Avery Way, Lakeland Hills, which is the Thomas Mann Circle, as well as some that have started to be being built over at Waits Crossing, which is the one over off of Florence Street. The more current and accurate our data is, the more fair and equitable it is for every resident in town. And I just wanted to mention that you may have heard that building permits have been down this year, which they have, and although that didn't affect us for growth because of those developments that were being finished, it is definitely going to affect our growth in this upcoming year. I know we have things hopefully in the pipeline, but right now, we're going to be in a low, so that's something to keep in mind. The overall value, assessed value of the town has increased by 11.2% from the previous year. What this indicates is that it was still a strong real estate market based on the 2024 sales that were used for the FY '26 values. And the tax levy, which is the, based on town meeting, is the total amount to be raised, and this number is less, the local receipt, which is things like excise tax. That gives us the tax levy, which is the amount that we need to raise in property taxes, which is what we need the tax rate for. This next slide is evaluation by class that shows the different classes and the percent for each class, and as you can see here, the residential class represents approximately 94% of the total value of town. This next slide is the impact of splitting the rate. So we're allowed to split the rate. The Department of Revenue suggests that towns don't split a rate until they get to be 20%. If you're at 15%, there are some towns that have done that. We're clearly nowhere near that. You can see here the residential, as it goes across, the residential, if we went to 1, which is a single rate, 1.1, 1.3, and 1.5, how little the residential tax bill goes down, as opposed to how much the commercial and industrial go up. Again, there would only be a very small benefit to the residential properties and a large adverse effect to the commercial and industrial properties, which I'm going to show you on this next slide. This is an example of the actual dollar amounts that would be saved in black for the residential class with the split at 1.1, 1.3, and 1.5. Commercial and industrial properties would have to pay the additional taxes in red. And something to note that this also includes any chapter land properties, as such as our small farms, because they are considered mixed use under the Department of Revenue's guidelines for chapter, and so they fall under the commercial category. As you can see, even if we went to the maximum allowed with the state, which is the 1.5, there's a very small savings to the residential class of approximately $100 a quarter, while it significantly increases the burden on the commercial industrial by approximately 8,800 and 3,600 respectively. So after the split versus single tax rate, we have to consider three current exemptions: open space, small, commercial, and residential. Open space is a process which allows cities and towns to grant a tax break to those properties that are classified as open space. The issue with this exemption is the tax burden then gets shifted to the rest of the residential properties throughout town. This exemption should not use with the open space chapter land program. We in the Board of Assessors have consistently encouraged classification under the chapter land program. It benefits the town, as well as the residents that do it who have this large amounts of land. There are currently 38 properties enrolled in one of our three different chapter land programs. In addition to the taxpayer that getting the tax break on their land and chapter program, the town benefits because they reserve the right of first refusal to purchase any of these properties prior to them selling it to somebody who would not be keeping it in a chapter land program and would try and develop it. The second one is our small commercial exemption. Small commercial exemption is only for sole proprietors and partnerships. Anything that's corporation is not eligible. They can have no more than 10 employees, all locations included, and the total value of the property cannot exceed $1 million. Businesses in there must be certified by the Department of Labor and Workforce Development, and if a parcel has multiple tenants, all businesses must be eligible. The intent is to give a tax reduction to small commercial property owners at the expense of larger commercial and industrial properties. Up to 10% of the commercial levy can be shifted from the eligible parcels to the non-eligible parcels. The issue with this exemption is that if the business doesn't own the building, they don't get the break. The tax benefit goes to the property owner and not the small business owner, and it's very difficult to track. Because of that, there are only 14 out of the 351 communities in Massachusetts to do that. So just as a quick example, the little strips, like across the street, the building owner would get the break, not any of the tenants in the building. And the third one is our residential exemption, and that can shift the tax burden within the residential class from homes that are owner-occupied to the owners of non-owner-occupied second homes. The town of Norfolk is obviously mainly an owner-occupied community. Therefore, we're not a good candidate for this exemption. Towns that typically, or towns or cities, I should say, that typically have adopted this exemption are either urban with a high volume of renters, like Boston and Brookline and Cambridge, or they are vacation areas with a lot of seasonal second homes, like Provincetown, Wallfleet, and Truro. We don't really fall into either of those categories. So the tax rate calculation for this year is the actual levy divided by the total assessed value times 1,000, which would give us a tax rate of 1487. So to wrap up, right back to what I said in the beginning, neither the Select Board nor the Assessor's Office can raise or lower the tax rate. Spending is determined by the voting public through the town meeting process. It's the participation of the town's residents at our two town meetings each year that determine the level of services desired, and this in turn directly affects the tax rate. And it's important to know that this tax rate still could be subject to change until the final approval from the Department of Revenue. After your vote this evening, the Board of Assessors has to sign, the clerk has to sign, everything gets submitted in Gateway, and then we wait. So the Board of Assessors makes a recommendation for the Select Board to vote to adopt a single rate, to vote not to adopt an open space exemption, not to adopt the residential exemption, and not to adopt the small commercial exemption. And that is your classification presentation for fiscal year '26.
Thank you.
No worries. Any questions?
I think our next step is open up to the public for questions.
Okay.
So is there anybody...
So, Chris.
Jack, I'm going to have you come to a microphone.
Or can I give you one?
I was going to say, can we give him one?
Yes, sure.
Since I am...
Yes. And you can...
Go ahead, Jack.
So are you aware of any surrounding towns that have a split tax rate?
Foxborough.
Foxborough does.
Foxborough does. They're an 80/20.
Okay.
They have 20% commercial, they have a split tax rate.
And so at the 20% level, it is advantageous for residents, the residential rate?
Those numbers that I showed on that chart, they then start to come more together, right? So then the benefit that is so small right now for our residential base, that is a huge disadvantage to the commercial, it comes closer. It becomes less of a burden for the commercial. They still pay more, but it's not horrific like it is at our percent, and...
Is there a minimum split that you have to follow?
No, you can do...
You do 0.1%?
You can do 1, yeah, you can do almost any number from 1 to 1.5.
Oh, you're going to start at 1%?
We, 1 is not a split, basically. 1 is what we're at.
Oh, I see. So you can go up to 1.1. So if you went up to 1.1, it wouldn't help the residents much at all?
No, so I...
But it wouldn't hurt the commercial business?
Yes, it does.
It would hurt them a lot.
Yes, so...
Are you going to a 0.1?
Yeah, so, yeah, so as you can see here, 0.1 is going to be less than $100 for the residents, and almost $2,000 for a commercial.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's really, because we have such a small amount of commercial, it really puts a heavy burden on them. So as you start to get more commercial, it puts, it's still a burden on them, but it's not as much, and it's definitely more of a benefit for the residents, where it's hardly a benefit for us at all.
So another question about tax levy.
Mm-hmm.
I know we talked, and you mentioned that every year at the town uplifts our budget by 2.5% because you don't need an override. Who makes that decision to do that, or is that automatic, or how does that...
It's by town. So basically, at the town meeting, that's where it's decided how much is spent. So if everybody shows up at that main meeting and nothing gets spent, the budget stays the same, but town meeting is where those decisions are made.
So that's where the 2.5% kicks in. We can spend 2.5% more without holding an override?
Yes.
At the town meeting?
Yes.
So there's no set amount that gets put into the budget, just the town meeting that decides, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
I actually have one question.
Sure.
Can you explain again the open space exemption? So is this an exemption that would be specific to...
So it would only be for... No, no. So it's only for things that are classified as open space, which typically is determined, it comes to us from land use, for example. So the one that pops into my head always is, because when I first started here, it was being done, then, is Nichols, Nichols Way. There's some land behind it that is considered, that is coded, open space. We automatically reduce that because it can never be built on. There's a lot of parameters that get put in when they decide to do that development. It can never be built on, it's this, that, and the other thing, that, you know, it can only be a walking trail or whatever. It gets coded, and it already gets a reduction.
Okay.
And then if you did this, you're then going to reduce it again, and the burden of that, whatever reduction that does, goes on to the rest of the residential class.
Okay.
So we've basically, in the town of Norfolk, made it so that we're just giving them a break in a different way. By coding it a 200, it's a state code, 200 code, it gets a break in its value anyways, and if it's not a code 200, and it's a large parcel, one of our farms, or horse farms, or anything to that effect, we try and get them into the chapter land program, which each chapter 61, 61A, and 61B have different state rules about how much they get as a break. They get that break as long as they keep it in one of those chapters, and they have to keep it as a horse farm, or as open space, or as a farm.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
Nope.
And I was just going to share, at MMA, a couple of years ago, I was visiting with somebody, I believe he was in Natick, so it was a community with a lot of commercial, and he said even they don't do the split rate because it would be so detrimental to their small business, and they wanted to support and protect those businesses.
The city of Framingham is a split rate, and I know for several years, they've been trying to get out of the split rate, and once you go, it's virtually impossible to go back. It's just very, very difficult because it's, yeah, it's a lot, so.
Awesome. So I'm going to...
I would see if there's anyone else that has any public comment.
I don't think, did we have anybody else have any comment? And nobody online has any comment? And nobody else in the room has any comment? So I would accept a motion to close the public hearing regarding the use classification of all properties and exemptions in the town for purposes of fiscal year 2026.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And is there any further discussion about the recommendations?
No.
So I would accept a motion to vote to adopt a single tax rate for fiscal year 2026, and further, not to adopt an open space discount, residential exemption, or small commercial exemption.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to invite Lisa up to the table, and I'm going to turn number three over to Tice.
Sure. Hi.
Hi.
So we have Lisa Sheldon here tonight, the Chair of the Norfolk School Committee. And Lisa and I have worked on a joint letter in collaboration with our Superintendent Dr. Ingrid Alardi with regards to the Chapter 70 Local Contribution Study that's being initiated by DESI in the state. So I'm going to read the letter, and then I'll ask Michelle then just to provide some additional context or any other comments that you want to offer with regards to what's happening. Okay. So, Dear members of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Division of Local Services, on behalf of the Norfolk Select Board and the Norfolk School Committee, we appreciate the Haley Driscoll Administration's review of the statewide K-12 Finance Formula. We write to urge a modernization of Chapter 70, so communities like Norfolk, small residential, transit-serve towns with limited commercial base are not disproportionately forced to fund essential services through the property tax levy. The issue is not our local effort, but the state aid has not kept pace with the true costs of providing a quality education...
[inaudible]
...and school budgets. Our town has little commercial tax revenue, so the burden of funding our schools and local services falls almost entirely on our homeowners. While Norfolk residents have consistently supported education, the limited growth in Chapter 70 aid does not reflect the rising costs of education. As a result, each year, we are forced to make increasingly difficult choices as we strive to maintain educational quality and fund critical municipal operations. We offer the following observations related to the topics outlined in the study. One, residential tax base minimal commercial offset. The formula's reliance on income and property wealth measures does not accurately reflect the actual fiscal capacity of towns like Norfolk, where median home values are high, but household disposable income is constrained by inflation, rising mortgage rates, and limited commercial tax offsets. Norfolk is primarily residential and relies on residential property tax revenue. Only 3.8% of land is commercial or light industrial, leaving little capacity to balance school and municipal costs with non-residential revenue. The master plan documents that lack of wastewater sewer capacity in town makes it difficult to attract restaurants and similar businesses that expand the tax base, directly tying state aid shortfalls to higher reliance on the levy. From 2012 to 2021, housing costs outpaced median household income, and 25% of households are cost-burdened, spending greater than 30% of income on housing, evidence that additional tax levy pressure is unsustainable for many families. Two, impact on municipal services. Local contribution figures no longer reflect what it actually costs to provide an adequate education. As a result, towns like Norfolk must spend well above the required amount. Like most Massachusetts municipalities, schools are the largest line item in our operating budget. In a town where the commercial base is small and sewer constraints hinder growth, every dollar not recognized by Chapter 70 must be backfilled by the levy or cut from somewhere else. Police, fire, DPW, library, council on aging, or deferred maintenance of facilities, the master plan says we must sustain. The artificial separation between school and town budgets overlooks the reality that both rely on the same finite local revenue base. Three, proposition 2.5. Because proposition 2.5 caps annual property tax increases, our ability to raise new revenue, even as costs in education and across our departments rise faster than 2.5% each year, is extremely limited. Although Norfolk has consistently gone above its required local contribution to meet the true costs of education, our residents are already carrying a heavy tax burden. We have approved multiple debt exclusions over the years to fund essential capital projects, but our most recent proposal failed at the ballot, reflecting the growing financial strain many households are facing. Roughly 40% of households include a resident 60-plus, and the plan flags an aging population, meaning even modest year-over-year tax increases strain seniors on fixed incomes. At the Council on Aging office hours, we routinely hear from longtime residents who have lived here for decades that each levy increases, each levy increase forces trade-offs, postponing home repairs, stretching prescription schedules, or skipping community activities. This is exactly the household-level impact the master plan warns about as our population ages. We find ourselves in a structural imbalance. Towns like ours have no sustainable mechanism to fund our own town services without overburdening our local taxpayers. Four, need for an updated and responsive formula. The community profile formula should recognize population and households. Norfolk has about 2,967 households with an average size of 3.1 persons. In Norfolk, there are limited local jobs, high outcommuting, only 1,519 workers commute into Norfolk well, 3,965 commute out, so most earnings are realized elsewhere. Another reason the levy falls heavily on households. How can the Commonwealth address Norfolk's fiscal reality? One, modernize local contribution calculations. Per DESI's FY '26 Local Contribution Study, to better reflect towns with limited commercial tax capacity and aging populations, so required local effort doesn't systematically outstrip realistic levy growth. Two, index Chapter 70 to real cost drivers we can't control. Special education, tuition, transportation, utilities, energy, mandated services, and collectively bargained salary growth, as an example, so that aid keeps pace with actual market conditions. Three, recognize infrastructure-constrained communities by creating an adjustment for towns where wastewater limitations block commercial diversification, until state or federal infrastructure funds... until state or federal infrastructure funds resolve the constraint documented in our master plan. Four, provide a predictable glide path so communities are not forced into annual overrides to keep level services. Five, substantially increase the minimum per pupil aid amount to ensure it meaningfully covers nondiscretionary mandated cost drivers such as inflation and employee benefits, and more accurately reflects the rising costs of providing public education. Norfolk's leaders, residents, and educators take great pride in our community and its schools. However, the current funding framework has become increasingly unsustainable. Despite responsible fiscal management and collaboration across departments, the combination of limited commercial revenue, rising fixed costs, and constrained state aid has pushed our tax levy to its limits. We respectfully urge DESI and DLS to advance reforms that provide more equitable and predictable state support, allowing towns like Norfolk to meet the true cost of education, maintain essential municipal services, and preserve affordability for our residents, particularly seniors and working families. Thank you for your consideration and partnership in ensuring a fair future for all Massachusetts communities. Sincerely, the Norfolk Select, sorry, the Norfolk School Committee and the Norfolk Select Board. So, thank you. So this letter is in draft and we will vote tonight to adopt it into final form where it will also be presented at the Norfolk School Committee tomorrow night. But I want to give Lisa Sheldon a chance to just give our community and us some context around this initiative and what we're, I mean, obviously it was laid out in the letter, but what we're looking to achieve here.
Yeah, thank you for having me and for supporting us in this initiative. I don't think there's too much more I need to add. I think we poured a lot of what we had into the letter. This has been bubbling up in towns like ours for some time now. Norfolk is not unique in this situation. Towns like this, smaller suburban or rural, no infrastructure or commercial, are just feeling this and we're suffering. And there's been more movement to advocate for a revisit of the Chapter 70 formula. So that's what we're trying to do. I had reached out to both our state reps back in March of last year, last April. The school committee signed a resolution with many other districts in support of revisiting Chapter 70. So we've been doing a lot of work in the background, but it is something, I think, that is so important. And we know as the school that we are the largest piece of the town budget. That's not unique to us either, with surrounding peer towns. We're in the middle of what funds are allocated to the schools as a percentage. But that's something we take very, very seriously. And we know that lack of funding for schools affects the entire community. And so we're really trying to push this forward for the schools and for the town as a whole. I do want to thank Tais in particular for partnering and writing this letter with me. I think this is a great example of the good that can happen when boards collaborate.
Absolutely.
Cross-board, working together, and intra-board collaboration. The letter started as a draft from a school committee perspective. I handed it to Tais, she added the town perspective. The arguments are stronger, the story is better, the letter, just, there's more to it. And so thank you for partnering on that. Thank you for the support. So I think this is a start. DESI holding these listening sessions shows that people are being heard and they're ready to listen. Dr. Allardy is speaking at a virtual listening session tomorrow. And then we can, as soon as everyone approves, we can submit this as well and continue to look for ways to advocate for adequate state funding to continue for our schools. Because we're really proud of our schools, but to maintain the quality of education that the kids here deserve, we need more state aid.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you as well for reaching out and for the opportunity to collaborate. The testimony also that Dr. Allardy is submitting is also in the meeting packet. If anyone is interested, they can read that. Her testimony is also very compelling and strong. And I think, you know, we definitely tried to make a good case for why we should see some changes with the formula, so.
Excellent. I fully support it. It does, is a very accurate snapshot of the challenges that both the school and the town are wrestling with to try to go forward. And so I would be thrilled with changes in the Chapter 70 formula. That would just be amazing. And I don't have any feedback other than the, there's been some real, real impact on our schools because of this, whether it's a partial curriculum adoption or increasing class sizes and having those specific examples. But I'm sure they're hearing that from across, because it does impact our schools in a way that's really tangible.
Right, okay. We always try to be a good partner to the town and we always look for the whole financial picture, but the way the formula is currently set up.
It's not working.
It is not.
And then I like how you use the word predictable in several locations because that's definitely a disadvantage of the current model where you don't even know what's going to happen and it's hard to budget around it. So I think that was excellent.
Thank you for reaching out to let us assist you in writing the letter, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Appreciate the help.
Yes, and Anita will be at the school committee meeting tomorrow night in case there are questions there. I can't make it, but Anita has volunteered to go, so.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. So I think we need to.
So I'm going to, I would, I would accept a motion to approve the joint letter with the school committee to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on Chapter 70 advocacy as it is included in the meeting packet.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, for being here and taking time to be here.
Absolutely.
The partnership does make us all stronger.
Absolutely. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And that moves us to number four. Mike, I'm going to turn that over, Mr. Gallagher, I'm going to turn that over to you. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Thank you, Madam Chair, for you. Thank you for putting this on the agenda. It's.
Thank you, Jack.
This is an item that has been, the town has actually been working on for some time, and that is the elimination of personal services contracts. We are down significantly in the number of those contracts that we have available, you know, that we have for folks right now. I can tell you in the communities that I've worked in, the only people that ever had a personal services contract was the town administrator and most times the police chief and then obviously the superintendent of schools. And that's really because of the nature of the jobs and the structure. Because in the case of a town administrator, a school superintendent, you don't really have a step or grade on a sliding scale or a grid of some sorts to put them on. So it's kind of like out beyond all of that. And on the police side, it's usually because of the Quinn bill information that, you know, if somebody's coming out of a bargaining unit and has the Quinn bill, if you put them into that position, they usually want that same Quinn bill, if, Quinn bill payment associated with their contract. So the fact that we have all these other personal services contracts and a number of them reference the non-union salary table, it gets to the point where there really isn't a need to have those personal services contracts in place. Massachusetts is an employment at will state. And as such, people are protected by the laws of the Commonwealth. But I think we've already started the process. We have a number of people that we have left the town. And as such, we're never, are people that fill those positions. Example would be your facilities director. Facilities director came in, does not have a personal services contract. Former facilities director did. Your DPW position is currently open. The director coming in will not get a personal services contract. They'll go on to the salary table within that line item for department heads within that salary schedule. So I'm not really sure if the board really needs to take a vote, per se, except to support the elimination of these contracts and getting folks onto the salary table along with the policies, the employee handbook and employee policies within the town. So I just wanted to have that discussion with you all and have, you know, an open dialogue about what, you know, what we're trying to do here. I know that Justin, prior to him leaving, prior to town administrator, had already started that process. Like I said, your facilities director doesn't have a contract. There were a few other people. So as we go forward, we're going to, we should look at doing that. And then as people's contracts hit their expiration dates, we move them then to the salary schedule without that contract in place. We have a couple that were just renewed, but those were for other boards and committees that the select board does not control. There are a couple of things that, like the library director, that may be. Beyond that, there really isn't a need for some of these other folks to have those contracts.
And just to add to the discussion, and please correct me if I misspeaking, but we have, over time, during my tenure here, we really worked hard on the salary.
Non-union salary scale.
The non-union salary scale, to make it equitable in line with what other towns are doing and also to make it consistent for all of our employees. And I think previous to having that to be more tight and more equitable, the contracts were necessary to kind of give people what they were. But now that we are cleaning that up, we have thoughtfully developed salary schedule. And so I think that that puts us in a position where now we can make this next step. So just to give people a little bit of history, it's not just like a, oh, now we're going to do this, but we've been slowly over time doing that work. And Justin played a big role in developing that salary schedule so that it's more equitable for everyone and people know where they stand. So I think this is good for employees and I think it is good for the town of Norfolk, too. Any?
Yeah, and I would say for transparency purposes, move everyone to a salary table makes sense to me so that people know what the town employees are being paid, roughly, obviously, within the scale, so it makes sense.
Now, should I also add that the salary schedule should probably be revisited periodically just to see where, some of your starting salaries are a little bit low because that schedule hasn't really been visited except for small percentage increases here and there. But I know in past places I've worked, we've looked at things like drop a step and add a step to keep up with, you know, some of the inflation that's going on and the salary inflation in particular, if you want to draw people in. Because the way our personnel bylaws, not personnel bylaws, but our personnel manual and our employee handbook is structured, we can bring people in in the first, like, three steps or whatever. But sometimes, like, your DPW director, if I brought that person on the first three steps of that salary scale, you're not going to find anybody because they can make more as a.
So how often do you suggest we revisit the, if we put that into our schedule so that that work happens not only now, but as a predictable way?
So I would highly recommend that in your, at your May town meeting, you revisit that schedule. And then I would do it every year. I'd just take a look at it and see where you are and see what's been happening with your ability to recruit and retain.
Absolutely.
And then take a look at how, you know, how competitive you are with the, particularly with the cities, the towns that are around you that are of like size. And that information is all out there. And there's going to be more of it. The MMA is working on building a database and that they will keep up. So you'll be able to actually get that information through the MMA. So as long as you maintain your membership with the MMA, that data will be available. And I'm glad that they finally have stepped up and put that information together because it's been something that's been lacking for a long time.
And so we can realistically be prepared for that for a May meeting?
I would, I would highly recommend that you take a look at that in May.
Absolutely.
Okay, you're saying we might be underpaying and we should look at the other towns and increase the pay?
Looking at the salary schedule to see how it lines up for. I'll give you, for instance, you have 22 grades within your salary schedule for non-union employees. The delta between the 21st and 22nd grade is so great, you would never put anybody on there. So why it's there is beyond me because the delta is so high. But if you close that up a little bit, do you then look at your department heads and say, okay, should they go now to the grade 22, to a different step within grade 22 within a?
A more gradual step.
Right. But, but things like that just need to be, need to be looked at. If you're having trouble attracting people into certain positions that are on that scale, should you move them to a different grade? Should you leave them in the same grade? Do you need 22 grades? You know, those are the kinds of things that really need to be thought through and discussed and then looked at. And you really should revisit that. I would say annually, just to see how you're doing.
I'm eager to do that because we want to have, be offering a fair wage to our employees.
Well, not only, so you need that for retention, but you also need to be able to attract people.
To recruit, yes.
If you can't recruit people, then you're going to, they're already going to other towns. And then you'll get the old adage of you get what you pay for. So in order to create a situation where you're attracting the talent pool, you need to take a look at some of those things.
Awesome. So look, go ahead.
But the only problem with that is all the expenses and everything is so great. We had a, the budget wasn't, last year we had to use free cash to balance it. If we want to raise, he's got a great point. You know, you want to go to other towns that have, are paying this and paying this. And we want to pay more and pay more, but where's the money coming from?
Well, that's definitely going to be a challenge. I think, though, having a consistent salary schedule that employees can count on and that allows us to be competitive, because we have had a fair bit of turnover where people have been able to leave Norfolk for much higher-paying positions.
And when we replaced them, we had to pay more to replace them.
Right.
So retaining is always, retaining employees is always a huge advantage.
Right. And the other reason why you want to take a look at that is you'll have people, if you have long-term employee, you've got 15 steps within your salary grade, salary within a grade. Once you hit that wall, now you're not, you know, your opportunity to increase your salary to keep up with inflation is then limited because you've hit that wall. So that's when you want to be able to look at that and say, okay, is it time to drop this step? And drop this step and add a step to, you know, shift your market over. It also then increases your ability to attract people at the other end of the scale. And again, you want to do it based on what's happening in the economy in general, what's happening in the economy in the area, what's happening in Norfolk County. There's a lot of factors and that's where the data will come in handy. And the thing that I like about the MMA doing this is every community used to have to hire people to come in and do this, these studies for them. If the MMA is doing it for you and keeping the data in their database, you just have to go out and run the report.
Now, can I ask a silly question? Why would we?
Can I answer it silly? No, I'm sorry.
If we, if you have a step and they go each year on a step, why would someone run out in 15 years when potentially they could be there 30 years? They start when they're 25 years old and they, why would they just run out and stop?
Well, one of the things that you want to do also is as you're giving, as you're looking and doing your reviews, your reviews, your step should really be based on your performance within your, in your position. So you shouldn't just automatically go to the next step. It should be, in other words, in other words, steps shouldn't be just because I have a pulse and I've worked here for 10 years, I should go to the 11th year. How you work, you know, what's your?
Based on my experience, I have had to manage this process before. And the schedules are reviewed every year and they're performance-based. So someone, obviously, there's a certain threshold you exceed, you move to the next level. But I think, you know, at a baseline minimum, we should be reviewing them every year. I mean, I just think that's good practice.
Well, yeah, but now it's going to be tough, though. You're telling all your past employees, well, you're not going to get a pay raise and at least we got to do a performance review.
No, I'm not suggesting that we do that. I just said at a baseline, we can talk about that portion of it. And really, it should be the HR director that establishes that process and we don't have one. But I think at a minimum, we should be reviewing the schedules. Because even for retaining employees, like if the gap is so wide for them to move to the next level, they're never going to get there. To Mike's point, they can go elsewhere and maybe be at that same level somewhere else in a couple of years, get a bump. Whereas here, because they're so disparate, I haven't even looked at it, so I don't know it to be fact. But if they're that far apart, it's hard to retain employees as well as attract them.
Right, yes, I agree.
So I love the idea of making a goal to look at that. In the, probably realistically, it will be January where we can maybe push up our sleeves and do that work. And. And I support the idea of moving away from those contracts. I don't know about the rest of the board?
Yes, I, I support that as well. And I think, with regards to the, the schedule piece of it, I mean, there really should be an HR, either the permanent town administrator, or if we ever get to a place where we hire a new HR Director, that person should work on that. But I do think that the schedule should be reviewed.
Yes, definitely. You know, it should be a schedule that can carry it out. If a person's here 30 years, they, after 15 years, they're at the top of the pay grade, and they can't go nowhere, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
But if we build in a routine of annually reviewing that, so that that protects our employees. All right, do we need a vote, or you have a good sense from your board?
I'm not sure you really need a vote. I think, I think the, the board has set its direction. We know where we need to go. This is not new news to anybody, because we've been doing it right along for the last, you know, as I said, through Justin's tenure here. Some of those have already gone. I think we just need to kind of move forward with, with the rest, and get to a point where we don't have as many. You'll have, still have a couple.
Well, yeah, like you said, if you get Town Administrator, and the police chief, and maybe the fire chief, or, yeah.
Perhaps, but you have to look at what's, what's in there.
Yeah.
Awesome.
All right.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we're up to updates, yes? Discussion items, general updates?
Yeah.
Me, too.
I'm fried. It's, it's, I can tell you, we are in the process of interviewing candidates for Public Works Director. We've interviewed six candidates so far. Haven't really found that person that we would feel would be, and when I say we, John DeLuca, I've been including John in the discussions with these folks. We do have another interview scheduled for Wednesday, with a candidate that looks very positive. And we're hoping that that person will be the, the person. The job is still advertised out there, so if somebody has their, the resume and submits it, then so be it. We'll keep doing that until we find the right person for the job. In the meantime, we're talking about how we want to structure over there. Do we want a Director and Assistant Director? Do we want a Director and a Superintendent? I'm leaning toward Director, Assistant Director, and eliminating the Superintendent role for the time being. And then have a team over there of, you know, two people at the, at the top of the house, and make sure that the place is running efficiently and appropriately. So that's where I'm leaning, as far as structure over there is concerned.
How are they managing over there right now?
So John is only, well, Todd just left Friday. So Todd, Todd Erickson stepped up and did a stellar job for us over there, and I thank him for, publicly thank him for his efforts. John is, this week, I increased his time to 20 hours, because now I have two salaries to utilize there. So John's putting in about 20 hours a week over there. But he's on call all the time, and then the, the foreman have stepped up big time over there to.
What's that, five foremen? Every, every department has a foreman, so there's five foremen, so there's.
So we have, we have five people running the show, and John jumping in and out where he needs to. So far, that's worked out okay. But this is the first week. This is the first day of not having Todd over there as our go-to person, but so far.
They're all, they're not all new employees, so they should know what they have to do.
They know what they need to do. The thing that really concerns me over there is having everybody in place when we get into snow and ice, and we have plowing and that kind of thing going on. That gets kind of dicey.
Yeah, because when you have the subcontractors coming in, yeah.
Yeah, I have to make the call of, you know, what are you doing? Are you sanding, salting? Are you plowing? Are you calling in your contractors? When do you want them in there? You know, those types of things.
That's when, that's when you need someone with knowledge, yeah.
Yeah, do you pre-treat the roads? Do you not pre-treat the roads? I, I don't want to be that guy, because it's like, no, I have enough trouble doing what I'm doing. So that's really my bigger concern, is trying to get somebody in there and situated. So, so we've got that going on. We did get a grant, and I'm going to have to, it was for, oh my goodness, I just got the paperwork today. It's about $6,000 or $7,000. I can't remember what it was for, to be honest with you, Mike. Apologize for that.
Grant for something, huh?
Yeah, grant for something, but you know, every little bit, every little bit helps.
Grants are my favorite.
Every little bit helps. You know, so we're, we're, we keep, we keep moving. The ship is upright at the moment. You know, we're not underwater, and I thank all the department heads for that. Again, publicly, they have, without the department heads and them doing their thing, I could never do what I need to do to keep things going. Beyond that, I really don't have much else, and I apologize for not being more prepared. Next, next, next meeting, I'll make a list. I'll try to go through the list.
Okay, on November 11th, the Lions had a Veterans Day Dinner for all the veterans. It was free to charge for all to go. It went very well. There was well over 100 that went. It went very well. November 30th, the Lions are going to have a Santa Parade at 3:30. Then after that, it's going to go into the tree lighting ceremony on Town Hill. So everyone has kids, more than welcome to go to that. And on Thanksgiving, the Greens is going to be holding a free Thanksgiving Dinner for the elderly and anyone that feels they could use a Thanksgiving Dinner. It's going to be from 12 to 2:30. And look on the community page for the RSVP email, you can email.
Excellent, that's fabulous. Thank you, thank you. We're so lucky to have.
Do you take out of towners?
Most definitely, yeah.
Yeah, I will just add, I also attended the Norfolk Veterans Day Celebration that the American Legion and the Lions hosted, and it was very well-attended. It was great. And Kevin and I also attended the Veterans Day Assembly at the school, which was also a great celebration. So we were excited that we were invited to those events. And I also just want to acknowledge all the work that Anita and Mike and Amanda and everyone has done on the Citizens Academy. I've been hearing great things from the residents. You know, they seem like they've been getting great information. And for anyone who hasn't been able to go in person, all of the sessions are up on the town website, so you can go ahead and take a look, if you're interested in learning more about town government. But I know I, you know, I was harping on, like, getting the word out in terms of communication and what we're doing as a Select Board, and I think that's a great initiative, and something that people can participate in to learn more about how the town works. So I just wanted to state that publicly.
Thank you. And I was, I'm sorry to miss the Veterans Event, so I was out of town for a wedding. So, and just so you know, if you go onto the town website, Amanda's made this beautiful little button called Your Town at Work. You click on that button, and then you're going to go into the Norfolk Citizens Academy, and all of the videos are there, all of the materials, the handouts, they're all there. So you can look by department, or you can look by session, and it's all in there. So thank you. And that takeaways into, there is, we have our next one, start, we start back up. We took a little break, because we had pre-town meeting and town meeting. So we're starting back up again this week with facilities, IT, and a land use game that I'm looking forward to playing. And, and I think that's all that I have.
And you could mention the pre-town meeting. It went pretty well. There were a lot more people that went this year and asked a lot more questions. So it was, last year was kind of under-attended, this year was much better.
Well, last time, we gave them like, two days' notice or something, and this time, they had months and months' notice, so people had a chance to get that on their calendar. So that's awesome.
Now, Chair, if I could, through you, I want to echo Kevin's sentiments there. I, I want to thank everybody who did come out for the pre-town meeting, and then also for town meeting, and for town meeting support for the articles that we put forward. It's, you know, it's, it always amazes me the number of people that come out for those, those events. And I think it's a testament to, you know, the open government that we have, and I think it's, I think it was nice to see. It would have been nice if there were more people there, but it still was.
It would have been nice to have more people. There was good discussions.
There was good discussion, there was a lot of, a lot of back and forth, there was a lot of information that was provided, and I thought that people were very receptive to the information, so. And then I just have one other item, since we're doing announcements. Next week is Thanksgiving, and per the history here in the town, Town Hall will be closing at 1 o'clock on Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So if anybody has any business at Town Hall, we'll be here Monday, Tuesday, and until 1 o'clock on Wednesday, and then we'll be closed until the following Monday.
Excellent. So I would accept a motion to approve the warrants as listed in the agenda.
So moved?
Second. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then minutes?
We don't have any minutes to approve this meeting.
Excellent. Then I need.
Madam Chair, before we go, could we just discuss calendar?
Oh, I apologize?
That's okay. I just want to make sure that we, so right now, you are scheduled to meet, today is today, the 17th, okay, we're into December. You are scheduled to meet December 1st and December 15th.
Yep.
The following week is Christmas, the week after that is New Year's Week. You are now scheduled to meet, I believe, on the 12th of January?
Yes.
The 12th and the 26th is open, so we should, I, so the 12th is, is your scheduled meeting. Martin Luther King Day is the following Monday, so I would recommend that you meet on the 26th of January?
Was there a conflict?
Yes.
I think, I think.
Okay.
I had the conflict. The day in that week, we can meet. I don't know if this room's available on a Wednesday, or if it worked for the other two.
We can, we can check.
I think we talked about.
I put the other meetings in here. We had talked about the 21st, but the ZBA already had hearings in here, so.
The 28th?
We had talked about the 21st in a previous meeting, tentatively, but.
Because you also have.
I put all the meetings in here as a schedule.
The 20th is an issue for you all.
No, it's good. The 28th is good.
20th.
The 28th.
2-0. Third Wednesday?
Nope.
Third Tuesday?
Nope, doesn't work.
Okay. So we can certainly check to see if the 28th.
The 28th should be fine.
Okay, so you want to do the 28th? Is that what, Wednesday?
It is the 28th.
I believe so. I think so, yeah. Wednesdays are usually good for me. Wednesdays, let me just double-check. Yeah, I'm good for the 28th.
Excellent. And while we're looking at calendars, do we want to go back to December and talk about?
Well, why don't we, let's, let's do these, and then we can go back to, we can talk about your interview process for the, your new Town Administrator. February, because Presidents' Day is the 16th, I would recommend you do the 9th and the 23rd, if that works for everybody?
Nope. 23rd doesn't work. The 4th Monday, I have another meeting, it's always scheduled.
4th Monday, okay. So.
We can make it the 25th, if that works.
Well, what about the?
Okay, the 9th is always, it's just the 4th Monday I have a meeting. I'm free every other Monday.
The 9th, so either the 17th or the 25th?
I prefer not to do the 17th, because that's school vacation week.
Okay, 25th?
25th works for me.
I believe it works for me.
I, I believe it works for me, too. So we're in February, and so we're saying the 9th and the 25th of February?
March, don't know if we'd have anything by the 2nd.
What do you mean?
We could, we could slide back to the 2nd and the 16th in March.
Right.
And just have it be short? If it isn't, if it isn't a be the agenda, that's okay?
Correct.
Because that 4th, 4th Monday's hard for Kevin? So we could say the 2nd and the 16th?
Yeah, because the 1st and the 3rd always work great, and I have nothing, so.
So you would meet on February 25th, and then you would have a meeting?
Well, if we don't have anything for the agenda, we can certainly cancel the meeting. At least we have on schedule.
Okay.
April, you now have Patriots' Day on the 20th, and that, that would also be a vacation week, so.
Vacation week for school.
For schools. So you could do the 6th, and I don't know what else.
29th. That's fine with me.
And then you get into May, and we have town meeting. And I would recommend the 4th and the 18th.
When is elections?
Elections are April, is it on here?
I didn't.
It's usually, I think, two weeks before the.
Yeah. Town meeting?
Right. So it's probably, oh, that.
Maybe it's May, is it May?
I think it's usually May in my head. Maybe it's like, the May 5th?
I think it's, I think it's May 5th, but I can double-check that.
All right.
Because usually after elections, we reorganize.
No. You know how we had the pre-town meeting for the fall?
Yes.
Is there any reason we have, don't have one for that?
We should have a pre-town meeting, for sure. And May is a budget one, for sure.
Right, yeah.
For sure, we should have a pre-town meeting.
Right, yes.
So we could think about doing that one on.
I would look at that sometime in April. The last week in April. You have your meeting on the 29th, maybe the 30th, do the pre-town meeting.
Yep.
Or it's, I mean, it's been a week before.
So we could do it on the 6th.
On the 6th, we just have to find a, just to find a home for that.
Right, but we could ask Freeman again, I bet they would let us. Did that work out okay?
Yeah, or the library.
Worked out fine.
The community room at the library.
So maybe we could look at the 6th, because sometimes those numbers change, and we have more information the closer we get to it.
Okay.
So May 20, May 6th.
May 6th, and then the pre-town meeting, and then the 13th for town meeting.
Thank you, Kevin, for catching that.
Okay.
Yeah, May 5th is the election.
Thank you.
Back to December. So you have, the Screening Committee has already interviewed three candidates. They have two more to interview this week. I believe it's, I forget when, it's this week sometime. They will then deliberate and figure out which three candidates they want to put forward to you folks. My guess is you'll have some, you'll have names.
Next week.
You'll have names before December. So you need to think about when you want to meet.
Sooner rather than later, I'd say. Can we do December 8th? For interviews?
I would, I would, does it have to be a Monday?
No.
No?
See, I would, I would, I would highly recommend you do something the first week in December.
If you can fit, if we do like, a Wednesday, does that work for you?
I can't do the 3rd, I have something already on the 3rd.
What?
Thursday, the 20th.
What about the 2nd and the 4th? I would recommend two days, two nights for your process. You're going to be interviewing three candidates. You're going to be taking probably an hour for each candidate.
Yeah.
I would highly recommend you do your interviews, and then take some time to think about it. You'll also be able to go back and review the interviews, if they're up online at that point, because it will be televised. These names will be, will be very.
Can we do the 4th and the 8th? Because it's Tuesday, I got something.
That's a big gap between. We could do like, the. That's a big gap between, we could do like the...
Select Board meeting on the 1st, so can we use that instead of, in lieu of...
Move the select board meeting to the 8th and have it, the 1st and the 3rd?
Or just not have it, just do interviews that day.
Do the 1st and the 3rd?
And the 4th, because I can't do the 3rd.
Does the 4th work for you?
The 4th what?
Of December.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the 1st will be a long meeting, right? That'll be like 7 to 10, like, that's going to be a long meeting. And the 4th is, will hopefully be, will just have one agenda item, right, to discuss, right? We'll just discuss the interviews and make a decision, so it will hopefully not be as long of a meeting.
Unless we have something of emergency nature that comes up in between.
Oh, please, you're jinxing us.
I'm just saying.
No, I don't either.
Been there, done that, unfortunately. Best-laid plans.
So it'll be a short agenda on the 4th, but to discuss and make a decision about town administrator. I love doing it the first week of December, I think that's awesome.
Right, because if they have a job and they have to give a 60-day notice, that's going to kill us.
Let's, let's, and then if we need to, because then the 1st, we will not have a select board meeting.
Right.
So we're going from the 17th all the way to the 15th is a long time.
You could do the 8th and the 15th.
We could do the 8th.
You're right.
If need be, if something came up, we do have that, we do have that as a ability to do that. So, and we could, we'll know when you had it.
Oh, on December 4th, is there Citizens Academy?
Yes, there is.
So where is that one? Is that one here? Please tell me it's not here.
I think it's library, maybe, police.
I don't, it's not here. I think, I'm pretty sure that's the education one, that's at H. Alliday.
Oh, I don't want to miss that one.
Yes, it is, it's the school.
Shoot.
What's more important? Oh, two lists is in the academy.
I suppose we can watch it on...
You can watch it on TV afterwards.
I hate to miss that, but I don't want to push it any further. We can't, we can't push it. What do you think? I know, it's killing me. Could we meet earlier on the 4th, like, meet at 6 o'clock?
Could meet Friday.
Friday, the 5th?
There's no law against it. I, I mean, I hate to drag everybody out on a Friday night, but you do have that option. Since we don't have, we, so we don't have everybody on the 2nd, we don't have everybody on the 3rd, you have the 4th, Citizens Academy for Education, you could do the 5th, 1st and the 5th.
I can do that.
I can do that, too. Let's do the 5th.
I'll give it my Friday night.
Yeah.
We appreciate that.
You're buying.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
All right, so there's a meeting on December 1st for interviews. We have the 4th, we're going to have Citizens Academy, which is education, the 5th. Will be a short, hopefully, meeting to discuss and make a decision, short, or not like three hours, is what I mean.
So, 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM. Is 7:00 the best time for you?
Can we make it 6, since, can we make it 6?
You want to make it 6?
Yeah.
Could do it, there's no law against it.
I'm fine with 6.
Okay. I just got to have time to go home and shower, so.
And I just need Amanda to send a text to remind us.
On the 1st, would you want to meet earlier on the 1st as well?
Start the interviews.
Start the interviews?
I was going to start them at 6, give us a little more time.
Is that possible?
Does that work for you, or does that not work for you?
It doesn't work for me, because I have something for work I can't miss.
Seth, we'll leave it at 7.
Okay, so 7:00 PM on the 1st for interviews, and then 6:00 PM on Friday for the decision.
So does that mean the screening committee is all done with their work, or...
Screening committee has one more meeting. They have two more candidates to interview this week, and then...
So they have, they have five right now, they're going to cut it down to three.
There were five that they interviewed, so they had 10, so there were 34, they narrowed it to 10. 10 went to the screening committee, the screening committee went through those 10 resumes, and narrowed that field to five that they wanted to interview. They've now, they're now in the process, they interviewed three, they have two more coming up this week. And then they will, they'll have the names for you, so you'll have them, we'll be able to post those for the 1st.
That's great, that is fabulous.
I keep forgetting, today's the 17th of November, I keep looking back. Oh, today's the 3rd, we still have a lot of... I still don't know what happened in November, I really don't.
I don't know, it's gone.
But anyway, that's where you're at. So thank you very much.
So now, a phone, a calendar away. We have to go into executive session. Yes. So I have to read, it's not here. Call to order, executive session, here we go. Are we ready? The select board will be entering into executive session under Massachusetts General Law,